Okay, we'll do public input a little later when we get into the regular meeting and let's go right into the reorg. Basically, the reorg meeting is the naming of various different items of business and the naming of certain persons for annual jobs.
I'll make a motion to designate M&amp;T Bank and Key Bank as depositors for the town of Wheatfield for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's approved. Art?
Uh, make a motion to designate Supervisor Cliff, Deputy Supervisor Howig, and Councilman Doucette as authorized signers for payments by check. Two signatures are required for payments in excess of two thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. All move that we designate Greater Niagara Newspapers and the Niagara Wheatfield Tribune as the official newspapers for the town of Wheatfield for two thousand seventeen. Second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Randy?
Make a motion that the regular meeting of the town board be held as per the attached schedule at seven thirty unless otherwise specified.
I'll go ahead.
Second.
Okay, Larry second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. I wish to move to appoint Larry Hellwig as Deputy Supervisor for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to pose upon the supervisor powers and duties of the administration and supervision of the town of special improvement district functions to be performed on behalf of the board for two thou- two thousand seventeen.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Art. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I move that elected and appointed officials with the exception of the supervisor, highway superintendent, water superintendent, assessor, recreation director, building inspector, sewer foreman, town clerk, town prosecutor, and town attorney be paid quarterly for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
You've been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's approved. By the way, if anybody wants to speak on any of these issues, ju- jump in before I, uh, call for the vote.
Like to make a motion to appoint Robert Lederstorf as Democratic Voting Machine Custodian for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
You've been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. All move to appoint Art Gerbeck as Republican Voting Machine Custodian for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Second.
Four oh and one.
I'll make a motion to appoint Patty Weiss and Mary Jane Zimek as voting machine inspectors for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I'll make a mo- motion that the town officials are compensated at the rate of fifty cents per mile for all itemized official travel using their personal vehicles during the year two thousand seventeen.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I move that elected officials be reimbursed for stationery, postage, telephone calls, and miscellaneous expenses for official purposes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's approved.
Make a motion that during two thousand seventeen, the town according to sections five nineteen and five twenty-one of the judiciary law shall not make deductions from employees' wages during the first three days of jury service and thereafter a deduction of fifteen dollars per day be made.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Uh, all move to appoint liaisons to the departments as per the list.
Second.
Good one had seconded. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Make a motion that the bonding of the town clerk slash receiver of taxes for the total tax bill be approved and set at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Approved.
I'll make a motion that the required bonding of other elected officials and employees as deemed necessary be approved.
I'll second. Second by Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I make a motion to authorize the supervisors to invest funds as feasible for the stipulation that financial report be submitted to each board member after each investment and also a budget status report on a monthly basis. Additionally, town board members shall receive monthly financial status reports of all accounts and investments, including itemized monthly statements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Just a brief comment here since Ed is here. Does anybody have anything that you're not getting that you wish you were?
You're doing a great job.
I think so too.
I do too.
Okay, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
Make a motion that the individuals per the attached list be appointed to have the power and authority as constables as set forth in the town law. With Robin Zastro appointed as head constable and Robert Conry as deputy head constable.
I'll second. Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. I move that we appoint Kathy Harrington McDonald as registrar of vital statistics for a term to expire December thirty first, two thousand nineteen, for the year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Wendell and GHD as town engineers for the year two thousand seventeen as per their annual contracts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Art. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I'll make a motion to appoint Wendell engineers as consultants to the planning board. The supervisor is authorized to sign a contract for this service.
Second.
Second by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Uh, I move to appoint Ed Mongol as budget director at a salary as per the attached list.
Second.
With many thanks for all of your work. Second by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. I'd also like to make the motion to appoint Justin Higner as town historian at the salary as per the attached list. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Art. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to appoint Mike Schaefer to the zoning board of appeals for a five-year term ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
You've been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
Make a motion to appoint Terry McIntyre as chairman of the zoning board of appeals for two thousand seventeen.
I'll second.
Second by Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. I'd like to move to appoint Melissa Gurman as member of the planning board for a term to expire five years hence, uh, which would be December thirty first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
We'll make a motion to appoint Walter Gar- Garrel as chairman of the planning board, term to expire December thirty first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
You've been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Stevens as bingo inspector at an annual salary as set for the attached list. Said term to expire December thirty first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
And Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I move to appoint Richard Muscatello as chairman to the town of Wheatfield comprehensive planning committee for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, uh, thank you very much for all that you do for the town. Uh, Art?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the salaries of the elected town officials are as fixed and established by town budget for two thousand seventeen.
I'll go ahead and second, and I'll note on this that these were the same numbers that were talked about during the budget process and were published, starting with the preliminary budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Just one page left. All move to set the salary of the sewer water foreman and the deputy foreman as per the attached list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to set the salary of the recreation director as per the attached list for two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kathy Donner and Kelly Burns as court clerks for Judge Mateo and Justice Delabio at the salary as per the attached list.
Okay.
Second by Art. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
Make a motion to appoint Judy Blake and Lois Stotting as court officers as directed by town justices Mateo and Delabio at an hourly rate as per the attached list. The term shall expire December thirty first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
Motion to adopt the pay schedules for hourly employees as per attached list. This motion...
Second. Seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
I move to appoint Matt Brooks as town attorney for two thousand seventeen and hourly contract as per the attached list, excluding special district matters.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Heim and Matt Brooks as attorneys for matters properly brought before the town justice courts, which call for the services of a special prosecutor and other matters assigned to her/him by the town board and to be compensated at a rate as per the attached list.
Need a sec- second.
Second, yep.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I move to appoint Joe Malloy and Al Nelson as electrical inspectors at a rate as per the attached list, term to expire December thirty first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
Make a motion to appoint Judy Burkhagen, ceramic instructor, at a rate as per attached list, term to expire December thirty first, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I'll move to appoint Supervisor Cliff as minority business officer.
Second.
Can you move and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. All move to appoint Paul Sigmund as chairman of the drainage committee.
Second.
Can you move and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's approved.
I move to appoint Greg Lloyd as chairman of the firearms committee with members Eric Minton, Doug Gunther, Richard Jackman, Ronald Wolf Senior, and chairman Camerentes, Paul Cozad.
I'll go ahead and second.
On the question, I did call Greg Lloyd. Their, their, uh, charter or, uh, rules that they run by says that they can have six to eight members. I think they're at, what, five here now? Three, four, five, plus Emeritus, six. Uh, they may add another member. I know there was another person that wanted to get added and, uh, he said that they would take that up in June when they have their first meeting.
Anything else? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Casper Zach as chairman of the fire advisory board for two thousand seventeen. Each fire company shall designate two of their members as members of the fire advisory board.
Second.
Second by Randy. Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. All right. Larry?
Okay, um... I make a motion to authorize the supervisor of the prepaid utility bills, insurance payments, phone bills, and postage as required.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
I make a motion to authorize the occasional services of Dave Muir as a licensed nuisance wildlife control officer for two thousand seventeen.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. I get to make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Signify.
Aye.
Aye. And that is approved at, uh, seven thirty-three. Very good. And I hereby declare the reorganization part of this meeting completed. Um, for the papers, if you want copies of the list, you can see Kathy after the meeting, she can give you a copy of yours. And we'll go on to the regular meeting now and we would start with public input. Did anybody sign in to speak?
Hi, good evening. Happy New Year. Um, same question, so, New Year. Um, I wondered about Quasar and any response, um, from Ag and Markets, where we stand on that? And then I also wanted to find out what the status is of the, the street light at Kruger Road in Niagara Falls Boulevard.
Um, with regard to, uh, Quasar Ag and Markets, uh, no contact, uh, um, as far as, uh, today, uh, appeal has not been perfected or filed nor have we had anything from Ag and Markets about a, uh, order or another opinion letter or anything of that nature, so...
The, the last update technically is we gave them information, they've not responded to it, right?
Information with regard to...
Or responded.
Uh, well, they filed, uh, with regard to the, uh, the, the one case there was a notice of appeal filed, they have not perfected the appeal. We didn't have to do anything.
That's approved, yeah. You're talking about the, you're talking about Ag and Markets, so...
Right, both, uh, both, but Quasar...
We sent, we sent a letter with some information attached to it back to Ag and Markets and they've never responded to it.
Okay, alright, and then...
And I don't know if they're waiting on the appeal, we don't know. They, they don't have a fixed timeframe, they just issue an order.
Okay. And the light...
The light, uh, we've gone through the process up to the point of them now doing the work, I believe, but... I don't think they've actually sent back a contract yet. The contracts are real sort of minor, but everything has been decided, everything's been sent to them a long time ago.
Well, you just need to get in line for that.
It's not, it's not going to happen any other time anyway.
I understand, but we still need to get the contract signed because if we don't stand in line, then say other people are on national grids list before we get there, do you know what I'm saying? It just delays it even more. So, regarding the street light, what about the street lights at, um, that were proposed at the December fifth meeting, um, on Brandywine and Forest Glen and then, um, Parkside and Carley Lane? Were those installed?
I don't believe they've been installed, no, but again, we've, we've sent them all the information, we've told them what we want, where we want them, uh, they've agreed to it. I don't believe I've seen a contract.
Okay. Is there any way to reach out and get a contract just so we can have that done?
Doesn't do much.
Well, I think we need to try.
I have, Julie, I have. I've called their, I've, I've had Francine call. It's just their way.
Who's Francine?
My secretary.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize that, so, I, I just think...
She, she does most of the person-to-person dealings with, with national grids.
I think one of the things is, is, I, this could open us up to liability. Our own, our own, um, zoning laws say there should be a street light on every corner. There's not a street light. We've been talking about this for a year and a half and if, God forbid, something happens on that corner, then I think the town's open to some litigation, so, just, besides the fact, it's just crazy dangerous right there. It's so dark.
Welcome to colors you want.
Email me her number, I will call. I'd be happy to call.
You just don't know.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else, Bob? Does anybody want to speak on any issue? Okay, if not, then we'll move on. Uh, for the record, Kathy, all board members are present. We do have a set of minutes which would be from a meeting on December nineteenth. If somebody wished to move those in for approval.
Second.
Second by Larry, second by Art. Anything that anybody wishes to change or correct? If not, then all in favor of approving as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That's approved. Small bill pay, uh, it's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Vouchers are twenty sixteen, twenty-five seventy-two through twenty-six seventy-six. Uh, need a motion to be able to pay these bills?
I'll move. Second.
Second by Larry, second by Gil. Anything that anybody wishes to hold? If not, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? That's approved. Uh, we sent a note around that department heads did not have to show up tonight, uh, because of reorg. I don't see anybody here, so we followed that nicely. So, we'll go on to, I'm looking.
Well, uh, I think that we have Tim.
Tim, do you agree? Didn't have any time, so... Then we'll mo- one more.
Okay, uh, two motions tonight, first from the agricultural focus group. To authorize the town to enter into an agreement with Niagara University College of Business Administration to allow the university its instructors and students to do a market research study program on agricultural tourism and agricultural income development in, for the town of Wheatfield. This resolution will authorize the expenditure of two thousand five hundred dollars from the town's two-hundred thousand seventeen budget to pay the university expense with regard to said research study as invoiced in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
I would like to make a motion to table this. Our, our grant writer came in and spoke with us prior to the meeting and told us if we, if we go into this contract now, that we wouldn't be able to get reimbursed under the grant. And, uh, he made it pretty clear to us that this activity would be covered under the grant and, uh, if we could just hold off a bit, um, that, you know, whatever we do with Niagara University would be, you know, grant covered. But if we do it now, it, it sounded like we wouldn't have a, a chance of getting those funds recovered, so, that's my motion is to table this for right now until we hear back from our grant writer.
There's a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Gil. I mean, Bill is here, let me ask a couple of questions. Bill, obviously we can't make this semester if we're gonna wait for a grant, it's gonna take months. Would we be able to pick up on this at the next semester instead?
Um, we can give it a shot. Uh, we have other companies already plugged in. Uh, what we were doing, we're taking twelve of our best students, uh, to do this, um, I was sort of planning it for Wheatfield. Uh, we did a project for you once before and it worked out quite well and, (sigh) you know, I, I'd hate to delay it only because I can't guarantee you that, uh, we can provide the students. I, I wonder if there's a possibility that we do it on sort of the idea that somewhere down the road, they would, you'd be able to compensate. I mean, I, I've got enough money in my bank account to keep it going for that short period of time.
Yeah, the problem with the grant is you cannot expend that funds until you've actually got an approved contract before you, so... I- if it's all going to be paid, if it's gonna be paid a hundred percent by, uh, an Ag and Markets grant...
Right.
A state grant, it's sort of a shame for us to throw the money away. Uh, we won't get a second bite at that effort, probably.
I, I didn't really perceive there'd be a problem, so we actually did interview the students. Uh, we have them lined up. Um, I will try to find another, uh...
Is the twenty-five hundred dollars the proper amount or is that just a shot in the dark?
Well, eh, what I've done in the past, when we've done work for the county, uh, we do, the trolley that is now running around i- in Niagara Falls was a project that Niagara University did. And I, I'm trying to remember what the exact figure was, but we ended up spending about sixty percent of what they gave us. So, when I contacted them to say, "We've got a check for you because we're returning forty percent of the money", it created quite a bit of confusion because they said, "No one's ever given us money before, you know, given it back." Um, what, what we had planned for the students was that they would be traveling to other sites, uh, Erie County, uh, going into, um, different states, Pennsylvania, Ohio and that, and finding out what some of the other ones have done. Uh, sometimes they come up with individual ideas. But on the other hand, if we can take somebody else's idea, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, if they come up with something that, uh, has been successful somewhere else and has a proven track record, we'd do that as well. Um, I'd always, uh, do my best to help you guys if somewhere down the road you want to take another shot at it. I, I may not be able to do it the term that you would like, like, right away, but, um, we can always schedule something.
We're having another meeting, uh, in two weeks. Uh, the table, I know the people who're coming off the table every time about two weeks. And I kind of, uh, and with, with your drop date this time, can you clarify the, you know, being approved of it tonight, that, that, that...
Well, it, it sounds, it sounds kind of odd, but what we do is we take our best students, so I've actually removed them from classes which subsequently get filled and I can't put them back, so I've got them now. I'd, I'd have to go look for a, another project and, and, you know, there's, there's projects out there. We used to, uh, do work for companies like BlackBerry, Toyota, Honda, Michelin, and, uh, I'm sure one of them, and they, and they all like the results, so, um, eh, I just find this an interesting project because it's a problem that we've got with farming communities in general. I think farmers are getting tired of the hours they have to work. I mean, they work long hours, it's, to me, it's minimum pay, and it's a tough, tough job. I see them out there on the weekends, early in the morning, plowing the fields. But if you at least make it worth their while so that they have some kind of a, a decent income. And I think that's one of the problems we have where the young people are under track of the state of the farms because, quite frankly, it's, it's not a job that'd be my first choice either. But if there's some way we can help them make more money, it sort of would help out. Um...
Yeah, I think that, that would be the goal of all of us, is to help farmers by making more money, uh...
I mean, you've got, you've got a, a beautiful community here and I think if it was all just residential, eh, it wouldn't be, be as nice as it is now. I mean, even the name Wheatfield, I mean, I love the name and, uh, hopefully, uh, this is in your hands, um... I, I will have to go look for, for this term anyways because I've got students that ha- that are coming back on the seventeenth. And I, and I'm sort of responsible for them, so I have to have a, a project for them.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we do, we have a motion to table on the floor. Does anybody have anything else they would like to say? If not, then we will go ahead and ask for a vote on the motion to table. All in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
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 I'm gonna vote no. Is there, is there a second note? From four, four and one. Hey, Bill, s- thank you very much for the proposal. We do have the opportunity of getting it paid for, we hope. And, uh, hopefully we can get back together in that effort. Okay, so, you see them, uh, you do have a second motion.
Yep. Um, next motion from the highway department, uh, to declare following items of equipment belonging to the town highway department as surplus due to the fact highway superintendent has indicated these items are in poor condition and are being replaced and/or not compatible for town highway department work to it. Number one, a nineteen seventy-eight Ford Tandem with a two thousand two Tarko leaf vacuum. Number two, a two thousand and two New Holland TNTD four-wheel drive tractor. Number three, mower for parts. Number four, nineteen eighty-one Ford five-five-five rubber tire backhoe. Number five, nineteen ninety-nine Ford four-door pickup truck. Number six, nineteen ninety-five Ford single axle dump truck with plow wing and salt unit. And number seven, a nineteen ninety-nine John Deere excavator with all buckets and extra wrist deflect parts. Upon declaration, these items being declared surplus and unnecessary to the town, the superintendent of highway departments is authorized to place said items for auction and receive bids on auctions international. Upon closing of the auction procedure, the high bids thereafter will be reviewed by the town board at future board meeting and determination will be made as to authorize the sale of said per- surplus items for the high bid price.
I'll second it.
You've been seconded. Anything on the question? All in favor of declaring these items to surplus signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. That is our motions for these. Um, next step would be, uh... Um, next step would be, uh, board member items. Larry, you have any?
Well, I remember talking to Wendell before the meeting, and I know that, uh, the individual, um, had his time and are still doing their conference retiring, and, uh, people need to come up with a date sometime in the near future that they can just cover, you know, dates or something. Uh, we need to probably move him next week, because, uh, uh, town board is, uh, uh, moving, I mean, I was trying to see if there's any, uh, there's two, uh, new faculty, three students, uh, actually, that, uh, um, are the deal. Uh, we don't have, you know, much time, but I don't know if you gotta tell him it's out right now, but it could be coming. We need to do it, but maybe they'll, you know, move it. Uh, next Monday, I don't know.
Do you think we should go out to some engineering companies, GHD, Wendell, maybe Carmine or Wood? Uh, I know, 'cause they do them where I work, but I mean, to get per event a price, uh, maybe they can answer.
We've already had some informal discussion with GHD and Wendell. We've not asked for a specific proposal yet. Um, Brit- the GHD isn't here, but have you guys got any ideas together yet?
We've been, uh, just, you know, we've been talking about it together, we talked a call the other day. So we gotta meet and set up your blind team next week, since we gotta...
An exit- an exit interview?
Well, we gotta know what to- we gotta know what these jobs.
Yeah.
And we have to do this annual report for last year. We gotta get all that information out of his head on the paperwork, so we can do the annual report. Before we address the primary purpose and then we can message. Um, but in addition, we'll get a better handle on the amount of activities that he's doing. We talked a call already about the amount, you know, speaking that he's doing, and pet base continuing and stuff like that. I also wanted to talk to Mike Fox, because I think, um, this is a little bit different than the instruction of just like engineering, whole town, and it's all over him. And I think it would be beneficial to the town, do some type of program where, I mean, we could manage it, but maybe use a combination of like the town building respect, you know, going out to kind of like, you know, highway folks, obviously, and the team, and, you know, facilities like that work. And kind of manage the paperwork. A lot of it is mapping and management, and, um, there's also a new, I mentioned, supervisor's list. There's a new permit that's coming out, it's been drafted right now, it's, and can be with mapping and record keeping requirements. Uh, in some cases by a significant amount. And that's certainly a draft. Uh, we reviewed that over the last few weeks from an instrument talent for the state. Um, I don't know when that's gonna come back, but two thousand seventeen is gonna be a planning year to get in place the program that's gonna be needed in the future, so, um... Bottom line is, we're putting together our thoughts. Next up, we really need to get with Ron Stevens, you know, and have a better handle on things from the handle that's been a while several years. And, uh, like I said, I wanted to talk with Mike Fox, too. I mean, 'cause I think a team of them is gonna be most comfortable with this, so that's kind of where we're at.
So, right now, you do a lot of the work with the MS four, but all Ron does is the in- weekly inspections. You would keep your role, and then we would just solicit bids for the weekly inspections?
So, Andy, in addition to the checking and inspecting, there's all the outfalls that have to be inspected, uh, with the new permit annually. Um, not all of them need, but some more important ones that they have to design annually. There's the, um, all the record keeping, the street sweeping, pet base continuing, um, there's gonna have to be swift repairs for the electric power garage, um, and it's gonna have to be worked on with that. So it's a different part of the program than the record keeping of it, that follows in the play. That Ron has been doing, that stuff, and keeping those records. You know, stuff like the attending one community event and having vouchers and stuff out. Uh, I don't know if he did it last year, but he had it somewhere in the past. All of that stuff is required by that annual report on that. Stormwater Coalition does part of the team. And, uh, that's the other part, I wanna talk to Mary Rossi at the county and find out what she's doing and what her stuff is with the new permit. The new permit changes the minimum debt, not a ton, but a bit, and so how that all ties together is gonna be...
Was Ron not making out reports and turning them into Paul?
I would not recommend that.
I'm not- no, I'm not criticizing, but I mean, aren't- aren't those reports with Paul? Or did he turn them right into Mike?
No, I just- they've been- it's been at the highway.
That's- that's what I thought, it was still the highway.
I wanna know where everything is.
Sure.
And we stop finding it.
Yep.
And get any questions that maybe isn't documented.
Yeah, Ron was a pretty organized guy, so I don't- I'm not questioning that, just wanted to know, I thought he was reporting to- to Paul rather than Mike. Good. Okay, thank you.
I- I guess where I started off with the question was, you know, Ron retires on next week, uh, some- someday. After he's gone, we don't have a plan yet to pick up.
That's good.
Okay, so we need to come up with a plan pretty quick, huh?
If you want to meet next Monday, that is a holiday, uh, but certainly I could get together if you wanted to meet here.
Now, the good thing is, that right now, because it's the middle of winter, the inspection of the site is like an explosion.
Right.
Doesn't- it's not, it doesn't really happen. And so, you know, you're not expecting outfalls, you're- the site inspection's gonna have to happen. So you're- you're in a period of time that you have a little bit of time to do that.
Okay. So if you wanna hold a work session next week, you can do so. Uh, if we're not sure we can get together Monday night, we can talk about when we can get together. Yeah.
You're talking Monday the ninth, or Monday the sixteenth?
No, uh, actually, could be either.
Ninth, I won't be here, but meet without me.
Yeah, the sixteenth is the one that's the holiday, I believe. Oh, yeah, I told you. Our next meeting here is the twenty-third.
Maybe we can send some emails around and see what our calendars are all aligned.
Okay.
Could you have stuff together for the sixteenth? If we were to meet that? I know it's a holiday here, but we could certainly meet for...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm- I don't have, there's so many things, I'm not sure why that means, I don't have anything in my calendar right now for that night. It depends off, but, I mean, I would be available, um, that night, right now, if it's like this.
We'll- we'll try and catch up to you and solidify that a little more. Okay, anything else, Larry?
Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Anything, Gil?
Uh, Mike Ranelli, our wi- our recreation director, asked me to remind everybody that our winter festival's January twenty-eighth. He's gonna have food trucks, uh, one of the fire halls is cooking chowder. You can see right behind the parking lot here that he's got an ice skating rink made. There's gonna be games for the kids, uh, and a ton of winter activity. It's gonna be right here in this area, it's gonna take place in this area outside, and the teen center and the- and the community center. And Ca- Kathy, aren't you on that committee?
Yes.
Any- anything you'd like to add to it?
Um, well, we had our first winter fest last year, which was a- a great success and a lot of fun. Um, and hopefully we have snow, so there'll be a nice mix, as Gil was saying, of both indoor and outdoor activities. Um, so we're hoping everyone comes out and enjoys that. There's something for both adults and kids.
Last year, there was a free concert at the community center. Is that gonna be in again this year?
There will be music at the community center and along with a couple other vendors that we're still putting together. Um, but it'll be some food type items and things that pair, um, 'cause there'll- there'll be a wine tasting. And, um, so it's just a- a variety of activities. But that's geared towards adults at the community centers and all the activities outside for the- for the kids. And at the U- youth center.
Mike told me today, he put the real active, uh, committee for it, they put a lot of time into it. Should, like Kathy said, be really nice for adults and...
Yeah, for kids. And the theme is, uh, snow globe. There's on the town website, that's- you'll see it on the main page. Um, so the- the staff at the youth center is very, very creative, so I'm really curious to see how they're going to take the snow globe theme, so it should look pretty- pretty good. And if there's snow, there'll be a snowman making contests. And one of the big hits last year was our, uh, maple taffy, and that's where you take maple syrup and make taffy. So they, uh, both kids and adults really liked that last year, so that'll be back.
Hopefully we get some actual cold weather this year. Okay, Gil, anything else?
That's it.
Art Gravick?
Uh, tonight's not a bad night for cold weather. Uh, January twelfth, uh, of this month, obviously. At seven o'clock, a meeting of the veterans group. So any veterans or anyone maybe would like to get involved in the veterans group, uh, you're more than welcome. And it's, uh, over at the, uh, Citizens Town Center, uh, senior center. Come on over at around seven o'clock, we'll be glad to sit down and let you sit in on our meeting. The next meeting that, uh, we're responsible for is the January twenty-sixth, which is the comprehensive planning board meeting. That's where all the focus groups come together. Uh, and basically the chairs of each focus group makes a- a general report, and then we move forward, uh, to see how we gauge our progress for the year past. That meeting convenes at six-thirty. That's all I have, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
I wasn't gonna say, I- I'll just go back on one thing about the streetlights. Tim, we've mentioned this before, we're in the planning stages, we need to have these lights, um, brought to our attention. We pay for them, and now we have people con- concerned about lighting at intersections, which is understood. This stuff should be and can be done long prior to the situation we're in now. And as far as national grid goes, I deal with them a lot every day. Pick a number. I know not Massachusetts. You know, when it rains, they told me the other day, we don't work. That's how they go. They sleep.
Is that it, Randy?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I have no communications or anything, so, uh, other than thanks to all the folks that make this, uh, a great place to work and a great town to live in. Uh, includes volunteers. Julie, you're here at every meeting, it's good to see you. Um, looking forward to this year. We do, our next meeting is January twenty-third. We do have a seven o'clock public hearing having to do with the community block grant program. We have a second pu- public hearing on the solar law. With any luck, we'll be able to finalize the law. Drew is still working on some of the changes based upon our meetings. We should get that very soon, and then we'll get it up on the website in its latest format. And at seven-thirty, of course, we have the regular meeting. Uh, we're back to public input. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say on any subject? Go ahead, Randy.
First, you know, I'm- I come here and I'm vocal. I do wanna just say, I really do love Wheatfield. And if I didn't love Wheatfield, then I wouldn't be involved. So I don't wanna always be the person that is seen as complaining. I'm trying to bring potential issues to awareness, and generally, I only am concerned about safety, not little things. Um, but to shift gears, regarding the agriculture, I understand that we need to be fiscally responsible. I really do, but I don't know where we got ahead of ourselves. But Richard Muscatello did a lot of work, legwork with, um, Bill Angus, and, I mean, twelve students that potentially are going to write a marketing campaign for us regarding the, um, PBRs. Um, so that- that work that they were gonna be doing could be used later. And I understand, I was just talking to Bernie, that, you know, that the date ha- we're in a timing issue is what we're in. And in the- the date has- of the grant has to be filed before we agree to this, but it just seems like, gosh... You know, I said if there was a way to do it, or even, you know, the students go back on the seventeenth. Do you know what I mean? Like, we're getting a really good deal for that twenty-five hundred dollars, and I understand it's a timing issue, I'm not blaming anybody, but, gosh, it'd be great if there's a way to work this out.
Julie, it was my understanding from one of the other councilmen that, uh, uh, this was discussed previously, but there was no mention of any funding on the part of the town. So then we received an invoice, it came out of the blue, we got it this week, and we just can't move that fast.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whether we have funds to set aside or not during budget time.
Right.
Uh, or we were able to write a grant.
Mm-hmm.
So that's how it potentially fell through the cracks.
Yeah, I mean, it- it just, you know, it'd be nice if some way... And I- I was in the meeting when Bill was there, but, um, I got there a couple minutes late, so I don't know that money was discussed or wasn't discussed. I don't recall it being discussed either, but, um, it just would be nice if there was a way to, um, get around it. And, um, again, there was a lot of effort gone into this, and the agricultural group, and Randy, you can probably speak to this, is on the cusp of finally moving forward with the next phase. I mean, we got the protection plan and- and then now like trying to offer the farmers that want a solution for the development rights, so... Anyway, just, you know, if there's a way, it'll be nice, so, kind of, I don't know.
And- and in the future, Bernie, if you- if you know about grants that are out, maybe, I don't know whether you let the supervisor know, but if you can let the town board know if there's something out there that's urgent, I mean, that, you know, if the- if the deadline... If the deadline for applying is, you know, coming up in a week or two or a month, if we need to know that we have to expedite something, you know, let us know, 'cause otherwise we...
Yeah. Thank you. Kathy?
Um, just so everyone is aware that the- all the county ta- tax bills, two thousand seventeen tax bills have been mailed. Uh, the due date is January thirty-first. They can be paid at M and T Bank on Military Road with checks only. And they can also be paid in the clerk's office, um, during regular business hours. That time of year. That time of year.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Uh, one more time, anybody have any public input? Yes, Bill? That has to do with the Summit Mall's request to, uh, possibly put in a brewery there. Good question. Uh, it would be the same place as we got the Jacob of the Ladder grant, OCR.
The Office of Community and Rural.
We don't have a whole lot of information on it. It's being worked on by our consultant. We agreed to allow him to do that, and we've asked for the public hearing at our next meeting. We'll learn about it before that next meeting and during that next meeting about where it's going. And we don't know how much. We don't know much about it at this point. Okay. Uh, if nobody wants to speak on any subject, then I will request a motion to adjourn.